So ordered. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Sophie, if you wouldn't mind leading us.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. If everybody could please silence your electronic devices as needed. There's a lot of people here tonight. If you came to make public comment, there is a sign up sheet behind Reggie. You just have to put down your name, email address, and your concerns, and we'll be calling on you during the public comment period. If there's students here for classes, whether it be civics or American government, and you need to have your paperwork signed off after the meeting, any board member can sign off your paperwork at the end of the meeting. Just come up and any board member can sign your paperwork. For the few people kind of hanging out back there that don't have chairs, there is vacant chairs up front. If you don't want to be directly behind the microphone, maybe the people there would be kind enough to let you steal them and hike them over to the other side where you are. Just a suggestion, you do what you will. So I think the housekeeping is taken care of. Motion to move the agenda to the table made by Ms. Gallagher, seconded by Ms. Holmes. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Dr. Evans, any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
There are none at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Motion to adopt the agenda as is made by Ms. Jersey, seconded by Ms. Holmes. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Approval draft minutes, March 21st, 2024. Motion by Ms. Jersey, seconded by Mrs. Greco. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Tonight, we have Ms. Vandermark here for our student board member update. I'll hand it over to Ms. Vandermark.
Tomorrow, Montzel High School is recognizing the most dear child. Students can wear purple to show support. We also thought that April is the month of hope that we give students the opportunity to thank the cause in which they really do most. So in addition to purple, students can wear royal blue to support child abuse prevention or any shade of blue to support autism awareness and advocacy. In addition, we are doing a canned food drive tomorrow to support those who may be food insecure. During lunch periods, students can fill out a hope card where they indicate what they are hoping for, and we could try and put them in touch with those that can help them in that area. Next week, April 22nd and the 26th is Spirit Week. We have Joseph Days and a pep rally on Friday, the 22nd. April 18th, Assembly with Dr. Phoebe Wyatt. Also, on April 22nd, Duncan Kirkwood will be at the Montzel High School. He will be meeting with groups of students approximately 120 students in total, four times throughout the day. Both speakers will be seeking to help students with motivation, emotional wellness, and student success. The New York State Bridgetts Field Test Exams, we have been selected to field test living environment offered to a new history. We're awaiting dates from next week to schedule these exams. We're also scheduling a viewing of screen images to help students understand consequences of excessive screen time, stubborn bullying, and help students be safe on the internet. The news goal "Once Upon a Mather" was this past weekend, and it was like success, a great show. Student sports have stopped scheduling as she has with all the rain, but a highlight was this past weekend where the Jessica Fingers Invitational resulted in several panda medals. Montzel High School had just started its fourth marketing period this week, and seniors are looking forward to all the end of the year activities.
Any questions for Ms. Vandermark? Thank you very much, Sophie. We appreciate it. Moving on to the consent agenda, Ms. Greco.
No, 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 no. I got presentations.
Oh, I almost made it. I apologize about that, presentations. I'll hand it over to Dr. Evans and Ms. Vaila.
Thank you, President Crumley. So tonight, we have Representative Ben Mizlona from Fiscal Advisors who will be discussing the financing that would go along with our capital improvement project if that were to be approved by the voters at the May 21st referendum. So Ben, the floor is yours.
Thank you, and appreciate you putting me on the agenda early. I always like to joke, but when I typically start to talk about financing, it usually clears a room out pretty quick, so this is nice to go on with a full house. We got Ben from Fiscal Advisors. If you want to slip to the next slide. Just to give you an idea of what our role is in the capital project, so we assist with all of the financing. So when it's sometimes to borrow money for construction projects, we're the ones that bring the district to market, helping you secure interest rates that are the lowest possible, so resulting in the lowest debt service. But on the flip side of that, also helping you maximize the state building aid. The district has a 61% building aid ratio, so if we can maximize the dollars coming back to the district from building aid, it also helps to reduce what the impact is on the taxpayer. So we assist with that as well. Other items we assist with are keeping the districts in compliance with SEC and IRS regulations, both very important, and closing out capital projects. There are various paperwork steps that need to be done that the state makes you accomplish in order to receive that building aid, and we make sure that that occurs as well. So to here, tonight, I'm here to talk about the $31.8 million proposed capital project. And the key items that we look at when we're looking at the impact of a potential capital project are obviously the cost, $31.8 million. You also have a very healthy capital reserve. The district has been very diligent in setting aside dollars in a capital reserve, in fact, multiple capital reserves for construction projects. Those are dollars that can only be accessed for capital projects, and they must be voted on. So kudos to you for setting aside such a significant amount. The other thing we look at is the borrowing. $17.8 million is what we would finance, so even though you would receive building aid on most of 31.8 million, we're going to borrow 17.8. So the state actually will aid you on the total project, not just what you're financing. Building aid ratio, as I mentioned before, 61.8%, so on aidable project costs, so it must qualify for building aid, you would get 61 cents on the dollar back. But if it's not aidable, then you don't get any money back out of it. And not all buildings are aidable. There are some components of this project which are not aidable, which is very normal. But when you combine unaidable project pieces with an aidable project, it becomes more feasible to accomplish all the work. So that's why it's being done at this point. The other thing we're doing is we're financing in '25, '26 to coincide with a drop. So I have a slide here on, when you look at this, you don't look at it in a vacuum. You look at the financing of a capital project in totality with all the district's capital financings in the past. I figured I would touch on this briefly because it's a very important piece of the puzzle. Each school building that houses educational space has what's called a maximum cost allowance. So the state isn't going to allow you to spend over a certain threshold of dollars in a particular school building within a five-year period. They have a limitation on that. What I've done here is I've broken out one building, George L. Cook Elementary, showing the top half and the bottom half. The state does not make anything easy, as Capital Projects and Lisa can attest to. So what they do is they have two limitations on a capital reconstruction project in every building. The top half is called a construction allowance, bricks and mortar, windows, roofs, parking lot, or windows, roofs, flooring, walls, reconfigured spaces. That's construction. That's the top part. For this particular building, it's $13.2 million. That's the very top number you see. Then the state also says, well, anything within the last five years, we're not going to pay you $13.2 million every time you come to the table. You'll $13.2 million over a five-year period. So they subtract out any work you've done within the last five years. In this case, it's one small EPC project, so the yellow highlighted number, $12,999, that's what you have for the next capital project for construction. Bottom number is what's called an incidental cost allowance. That represents soft costs, but also site work, fields, drainage, sidewalks, parking lots, all of that site work. Same methodology. They give you a limitation, 2.6 million. You then have to subtract out any costs in the last five years. In this instance, there are no incidental costs, EPC, it's all rolled into the construction. So you have 2.6 million there. Reason why I bring this up is for every building, we look at this on a detailed analysis, and the scope of work which Lisa shared with us, we make sure that we can fit within those allowances. If we can't, well, how far over are we? And we bring that to the district's attention to make sure that when we propose a project, we're not assuming everything is going to get you 61.8% because it's not. This slide is probably a little bit difficult to see, but if you have it in front of you in your laptops, this is a proposed or tentative financing plan for the capital project. Generally, any project financing, you have a combination of short and long-term financings to get you to where you want to go. So in this instance, short-term financing, debt service is represented in columns four and five. Long-term financing is represented in columns six and seven. The totality of debt service is what we're really concerned about, and that's in column eight. And then the other piece of the puzzle that's of utmost importance is the state building aid, which we are estimating about $934,000 per year to come back to the district. A little earlier, I mentioned, you never look at a capital project in a vacuum, but this is that vacuum for this project itself. So this is only this capital project. And the difference between your state building aid and your debt service is what we like to call the local share, or that's what the tax levy must support. That's represented in the column to the far right, column 10. So for this capital project, you'll see that the numbers vary a little bit on what the tax effect is, and that's on purpose. Once we take this, now we have to slide that into the overall debt service picture for the district. To the next slide. And this is when we layer everything in together. The first column, the total debt service, that is everything that's existing for the district. Then we have the total debt service for the proposed $31.8 million project, that is represented in blue. The third column over, or the middle column, is your estimated state building aid, and that's for all your existing capital projects, everything that's outstanding as of today. And then we have the blue estimated aid for the proposed capital project of $934,000 a year. When you take the combinations of your current total debt service, 31.8 debt service, subtract out your building aid and proposed building aid, you'll get the total local shares, everything in combination. Irregardless of the $31.8 million project, about $2.33 million is going to support your current capital program. What I've done is I've tried to structure this so that, number one, we stay consistent in the '25, '26 fiscal year, which we do, which is also represented by the yellow highlight. And then when this 31.8 really starts to take shape and starts to hit the ground running with construction, that is when you'll see the blue highlight, where it goes from 2.33 million to about 2.45, 2.42 million, an average increase of about $102,000 on the levy. So we're very strategic, and we want to time this project, number one, to coincide with an existing project that's falling off, and minimize the tax increase. So for this project on its own, the levy increase as a percentage would be fairly small, especially when you're looking at $31.8 million project cost that you're getting aid on. So I always like to summarize the important factors. This is really kind of the, probably the easier piece of the puzzle to digest. If you start left to right, the most important factors in the financing of the project, again, the total project costs $31.8 million. I should mention, that's a maximum. If the project comes in under budget, you just don't have to spend it, but voters must authorize a maximum amount. Amount of reserves we're applying, 14 million. The building aid ratio, there's that 61.8%, and that applies to aidable project costs. Now, in this particular project, the 5%, that represents the percentage of the project which we estimate will qualify for building aid. There are some significant pieces of the project that are not aidable. Again, that's normal. And we're trying to be extremely conservative at this point in time because we want to come back to you in a couple of years and say, well, it wasn't $102,000 tax increase, it was zero. So that would be my goal, is to be standing in front of you saying that. So as of today, we're only estimating about 53% will be aid eligible. The other important factor is the term of building aid payback. It's 15 years. This is a reconstruction project, and building aid is paid over 15 years. If it's an additions project, then it would be paid over 20 years, and a brand-new building, like the transportation center that was just built, that's aided over 30 years. So you match the financing to coincide with the receipt of the building aid. And then I mentioned there the $102,000 increase, and that would be the increase over what the '24, '25 figure is. And what does that represent? It's about 2.4 cents for every $1,000 of value, and I believe I saw on the website that you did a very good job of explaining, for a $250,000 house, it's about $6. And again, that impact would not occur for a couple of years down the road. So that was a financing piece of it in a very quick nutshell. I know you have a very busy agenda, but I do want to stop, entertain any questions that the board may have.
Any questions from round two?
Okay, questions? So you mentioned the interest rate. Can you explain to me how that works there?
Interest like on the borrowings?
Yes.
So it's, I like to almost equate it to a mortgage. So at the beginning of a project, when you're doing short-term financings, they're typically a year. You have a lot of flexibility with payments and that. But when you really convert to a bond, it kind of seems like a mortgage. So a mortgage, you pay the same every month, or a bond, you pay roughly the same every year. It can't be exactly the same because bonds are issued in $5,000 denominations, so you can't get down to the penny like you can on a car payment or a mortgage payment. But basically, you are borrowing the money, and you're paying interest over a 15-year period in addition to repaying the principal amount of 17.8 million. The state does pay you building aid on interest as well. So the state has a certain formula where they take the aidable project costs, use your building aid ratio. There's a whole litany of assumptions they make as well, I won't bore you with, but they take the assumptions as well, and then it calculates a number. In my estimate, I have it as $934,000. So for the aidable project costs, their formula says you should get $934,000 a year in building aid. But they do take into account that you're paying interest expense on that borrowed money as well.
You said you should. So if we don't get this $934,000?
I think, hold me to it, but we're typically pretty conservative on the get-go on the onset of this, so my hope is that you'll actually get more than that. One thing I will mention, the building aid is promised when the state, the process is that you vote the project, your architects design it, it goes into the state and they review it. At the time they review it and give you your certificate saying that you can do the project, we will know what the building aid is. If for some reason, they say, we don't want to aid any of it, you have not bid the project, you have not committed the district to constructing the project, and you don't have to do the project. So you're only really committed to building the project once we actually know exactly what the building aid is going to be, and then we know that the state's committed to the project, then you bid it, and then away you go. And we've been doing this, our firm's been doing this for over 50 years, and pretty good at estimating what the building aid is going to be for projects. And again, I like to be a little conservative, so my hope is that it's actually going to be higher than that.
So when does the interest rate, say that this passes? When do the interest rate, when do we figure out the interest rate? My worry is how the economy is absolutely a little crazy right now, and I'm concerned about the interest rate.
That's certainly always a concern, so twofold with that. Currently, for my projections, I've estimated, I believe, around 5% of the interest expense as a rate. Currently, rates are 375 or 40. So I'm about a 1% to 1.25% conservative. I'm higher than current market. Another thing to keep in mind is that, let's say interest rates skyrocket, the building aid associated with a project will also go up because that's tied to interest rates as well. So it's not like that $934,000 is a stagnant number. If I'm low on the debt service by $100,000 a year on my estimate today, chances are the building aid is going to go up around $75,000 or $100,000 as well. So both sides of the equation go up, but to you, the taxpayer and the district, it's net neutral. But you're never, sorry, I guess to go on and start with timing, we would probably not be fixed and actually know the exact debt service on this project until June of '26 or June of '27 at the earliest. So it is a bit of a, it is 100%, but again, that's why I'm here, to make sure that hopefully I've built in enough cushion at the onset of the project, and that if things start to change, you know, we can always finance and bond earlier than I think we should if rates start to creep up. But those are annual discussions that I have with Lisa.
Very good questions. Are we good?
So, I'm sorry. So you see, you talk about this annually. So if it skyrockets, when? When will it? So you're saying that's neutral for the taxpayer? The taxpayer?
I mean, it's never going to be exactly neutral, but I say if both sides of the equation move together. So if debt service, no, debt service goes up, building aid chases it. If debt service goes down, building aid, it's like this. But as long as I have enough cushion in between the two, that the difference between the two is what district residents should be, are most concerned on. So you know, if I say, you know, it's going to cost $100 a year, and you're getting $90 back, it's $10 in addition. If it costs $200 a year, which you're getting $190 back, it's still $10 a year for district residents, with both sides of the equation.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for coming out this evening.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much, Ben. Have a good night. Ted Crum.
And the 2024-25 Budget Proposal presentation, Dr. Evans.
Thank you, President Crumley. So just a few remarks before I turn this over to Ms. Vaila. As many of you know, this has been a very challenging budget development process. Our school district, like many across the state, relies heavily on state aid as a revenue source. Approximately half of the district's revenues come from state aid. So when the governor proposes cuts to state aid, it indicates that state aid will continue to decline as student enrollment declines in the future. We take notice. Knowing this, we asked our administrators to scrutinize all programs, look for ways to improve efficiencies, consider eliminating positions through attrition in an attempt to avoid layoffs, and while doing so, maintain as many student programs as possible. I am proud of the efforts made by our administration in developing this proposed budget. As one will soon see, we estimate the tentative state budget agreement between the legislature and the governor to result in a $29,000 or 0.06% overall increase in our state aid for the next budget year. According to published reports, the governor and legislature have agreed to keeping all school districts at hold harmless in foundation aid, in other words, no reduction from the '23, '24 amount, and a 2.8% increase in foundation aid statewide. This is well below the current rate of inflation, which is 3.8%, and the methodology in the current foundation aid formula, which would call for a 4.1% increase. I thank Assemblywoman Gunther and Senator Overacher for their efforts in getting us back to hold harmless on foundation aid. Given this and the forecasts of declining aid in future years, we've had to make some difficult decisions. Luckily, no employee of this district will be laid off. The positions being eliminated in this proposed budget are all through attrition. It will, however, result in the transfer of the alternative school to Monticello High School. It will also result in slightly larger class sizes in some of our elementary schools. These are being done solely for the purpose of balancing this budget. We believe, however, that these changes are reasonable and will still create environments for student success. Even with these proposed changes, our budget will still increase by 2.44%. To offset the relatively no change in state aid, we are proposing to increase the tax levy by 2.6% and use $727,000 of our fund balance. For context, these were both zeros for the budget year 2023-24. We recognize our role in providing the best programs possible for all of our students. We also recognize our responsibility for doing so in a way that is mindful of our taxpayers. Before I turn this over to Ms. Vaila, and without stealing any more of her thunder, I want to publicly thank her, Ms. Carlin, our administrators, and the Board of Education Budget Committee for their work in developing this budget. Ms. Vaila.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. So this evening, I'm presenting the final budget for the board to adopt to present to the voters on May 21st. So briefly, to go over our budget process, it starts back in November with the budget calendar that the board adopts. Calendar sets down all the deadlines and dates of important meetings. I also provide a three-year average budget expenditure comparison to all the buildings and apartment leads. We look at the governor's state aid proposal that comes out in January. I calculate the tax levy limit that's due on March 1st. And then from February through April, we have all the budget request presentations to the board by buildings and apartments. And April 1st was the date for an approved state budget by law, and of course, they've missed that deadline, and we still don't have an approved state budget. So this presentation uses the governor's proposal, but including state, safe harbor. One other note is that in previous two years, we've had federal stimulus money. That money is gone for this budget season. Our goals for developing our budget is to meet the financial goal of the district's strategic plan, which is at least 50% of the revenue comes from state aid, and to keep the tax levy as low as possible. And like Dr. Evans said, the last two years, the tax levy has not increased at all. So what I do is I start with a rollover budget, which takes all on employees and programs from the current year and rolls it forward to the following year, including any contractual increases. That number for '24, '25 was $101,118,880. Our budget proposal for '24, '25 is $10277,426, which is a decrease from the rollover of $840,000. Is it increase from the '23, '24 budget, almost 2.4 million, or 2.44%? The expenditure budget proposal? Or expenditures, the majority of our budget is salary and benefits. The next highest number is Boise services. This represents about $85,000, $85 million of $100 million. We have equipment purchases, that includes some school bus replacements, contractual purchase services, art conferences, field trips, all sorts of things like that, materials and supplies. And then the final number is our debt service and our transfers to special aid and capital, and the lease for the Jefferson Street property. A total budget proposal of $10277,000. So what is included in the budget proposal, all the vacant positions included, there's 4.0 FTE special education positions that are not yet built, and a 1.0 FTE Spanish position. Also included is 1.0 FTE of a retiree for ELA, NS 1.0 FTE speech retiree, and all the building and department requests that were presented to the board over the past several months. What's not included in the budget proposal for '24, '25 are vacant positions in science, Spanish, and elementary, and retiree positions. in science, Spanish, and elementary and retiree positions in ELA guidance map, social studies, and elementary. The next slide just graphically shows how the budget's broken down, where you can see salaries, benefits, and BOSIs make up the majority of our budget. Then I wanted to include some enrollment trends, just because Dr. Evans didn't speak about the governor focusing on declining enrollment and how that may impact state aid going forward. And in the last several years, we've lost almost three hundred students district-wide. Our revenue budget proposal, again, this does, this is an assumption on state aid. State aid is not yet set. Soon as we have our state budget, we will know that number for sure, but this is the number which is the governor's proposal plus safe harmless. You have a property tax increase of two-point-six percent. Again, the last two years, property taxes have not gone up at all. Other tax items mostly came in some blue of taxes. Those are going down. You get the state aid, which is only a twenty-eight thousand dollar increase of point zero-six percent. Federal aid and is Medicaid and reimbursements. Our charges for services stays the same. One bright spot is our interest on investments, interest rates were, have gone up, and so we are anticipating at least for the first half of the year, next year, that our interest rate will be high enough to generate some decent income. You have a refund of a private year BOSIs, that's, BOSIs is not allowed to carry a fund balance. Any excess money they have at the end of their year, they have to give back. We're estimating our share to be two-point-three million and miscellaneous fifty thousand dollars. And in order to have enough revenue to support the budget, we have to appropriate fund balance of seven-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars. You, this chart, this chart shows the percentage of each portion of the revenue budget, where property taxes represent forty-five percent and state aid is fifty percent, so it meets our goal of the strategic plan. I ask this question a lot, tax levy or tax rate, and what's the difference? Tax levy, that's the total amount of money that the district will raise from taxes, and it is limited by the tax levy cap calculation. The tax rate is determined by apportioning the tax levy to each town based on equalized assessed values. The assessors in each town determine the assessments. They can change that up until August fifteenth of the current year. And New York State Department of Taxation, Equalization, and Assessment determines how close to one-hundred percent of full value each town assesses its properties and then assigns an equalization rate. I know that was a lot of words. So I could have a couple of examples here, just to show how changing an equalization rate can affect the tax rate and the tax levy for a particular town. Example one shows a town has assessed value of, ABC Town has assessed value of a million dollars with an equalization rate of eighty-five percent. And the next door neighbor town of XYZ has the same one million dollars of assessed value, but a tax rate of a hundred percent. If the levy was a hundred thousand dollars, the equalization rate applied and apportioned to those two towns, ABC Town's full value is no longer a million dollars, it's one million, one-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand dollars. And XYZ Town, because it's a hundred percent, equalization rate stays at the million dollars. So even though they have the exact same assessments and the exact same tax levy, the equalization rate apportion's that differently. And then example two shows a change of five percent in each of those equalization rates. You can see that ABC Town's equalization rate goes from one-point-four-seven-six to one million, two-hundred-and-fifty. An increase, a slight increase in the tax rate and the tax levy. And XYZ goes from one million to one million, fifty-two. And that's all what the equalization rate can do on its own. When the assessed values change and the equalization rate changes, it complicates the formula even more. But I'll just put that out there so people can refer to it if they have questions on equalization rates. This slide shows some historical budget information. It shows our percentage increases in the budget year-to-year and the tax levy year-to-year. The top row shows point-four, twenty-five with a two-point-four-four percent increase in the budget. The tiny numbers is a tax levy increase of two-point-four, should be two-point-six and apologize for that. The next slide shows that same information graphically. You can see that the tax levy for twenty-four, twenty-five is still lower than it was in two thousand fourteen, fifteen. Each year I do fund balance projections. I update them throughout the year in order to determine whether or not we have enough fund balance to apply to the revenue side of the budget, balance the budget. I put together this fund balance projection. Twenty-three, twenty-four is, says budget, but that's actual, my estimate of what the revenue's going to come in at and what the expenditures are going to come in at. And then projecting that forward using minimal tax levy increases and, not tax levy, minimal state aid increases. Twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four column, that's this current year, that shows a large increase of full foundation aid funding. At the end of the slide down below, you'll see that we do have a significant fund balance to apply for the tax levy. And going forward, we should be fine for the next several years. Any questions?
Would I have any questions regarding the budget presentation?
Jefferson Street, how long did that lease for?
So that was a five-year lease. The lease expires in October of twenty-four. And so we are going to renew that lease if the budget passes.
Well, St. John Street, is there enough room, since the alternative school will no longer being existent, is there enough room at St. John Street to move the offices over?
We looked at that, and the short answer is no. A lot of the issues come into play with parking, but also the space, because of the nature of district office work, where you're handling a lot of confidential information, those rooms would have to be converted into cubicles, they'd have to be partitioned out, and it really wouldn't, wouldn't work for what we need as a, as a district office. We did examine it, though.
So there's not enough separate rooms up there and avenue cubicles?
There's not enough space to move all of district office into the New Deal side of St. John Street.
Any other questions regarding the budget? Thank you very much, Dr. Evans and Lisa, for putting that together for us. We appreciate it and recognize all the work put into putting that together. Thank you very much. Moving on to the consent agenda. Ms. Greco.
I motion that we approve action items F-one.
Consent agenda.
I'm sorry, I thought that approved.
No, you can approve, but just the consent agenda.
No, you have an action, I'll use the word consent. They're part of it. It's the same action.
Got you.
I motion that we approve the consent agenda. Actually, I, I'm sorry, the consent agenda, items F-one to K-two and K-four to N-two.
Do I have a second on that? Made by Ms. Jersey. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Ms. Greco?
I motion that we approve consent item K-three.
Do I have a second on that? Made by Ms. Holmes. All in favor? Any opposed? Good, Janet? Thank you very much, everyone, for that. Moving on from the consent agenda. Yeah. So in our consent agenda, which was relatively large, there was a portion of that where seven of our teachers just got approved for tenure. So thank you very much for. So congratulations, Amanda DePuy. Ally Lennon. (inaudible). Alicia Crum. And (inaudible). I'd also like to introduce to the district, we just appointed three new teachers, Alicia White, school social worker, is Alicia here? Chris Dibbers, new speech language fellow, welcome, Chris. And Lauren Carr, new pre-K special ed teacher, welcome. Would somebody like to make a motion to recess for a brief time so we can have cake? Made by Ms. Jersey, seconded by Ms. Holmes. Any discussion? All in favor? We have cake. So please, everybody come up and have a piece of cake. And thank you very much to everybody for being with the district.
Okay.
Made by Ms. Holmes, seconded by Ms. Jersey, any discussion? All in favor?
Who went back?
Jen.
Helen.
Helen. Once again, thank you very much to our new employees and our tenured people. But we need to move on with our agenda, so if everyone could kind of keep the discussions down, we'd greatly appreciate it. So moving on to board roundtable. Adriana, would you like to start us off this evening?
Yes. So I went to see High School Musical over the weekend. They did an amazing job, and I have to say, I was very impressed with the physical comedy and timing. You guys did a great job, which is what makes comedy. And then we had a good and productive policy committee meeting today. We will be moving two policies forward and then doing further policy review as we will meet again on May the 9th, 5:30.
Thank you very much, Ms. Greco. Ms. Gallagher?
I have nothing to report this evening.
So much. Mrs. Larissa?
Yes, I attended the policy committee meeting prior to our board meeting. On the 18th, I will be attending the Code of Conduct meeting. And I would like to let everyone know that from Saturday, Boy Scout Troop 101 in Rock Hill, we have a Boy Scout dinner from 4 to 8. And the St. John Street will have their Taco Bongo on May 4th. Hope everyone's there. And the daffodils look absolutely gorgeous over the pre-Ks, where they planted them last year. It's beautiful.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Larissa. Mrs. Riley?
Yes, the Boy Scout dinner is on Wednesday?
Saturday.
Sorry.
4 to 8.
Where's that Rock Hill?
Rock Hill.
You got the one really working, Mike.
Okay, so Saturday was a big day. Most don't even need that, do I?
Sorry, I can't. I'll just talk that. Saturday, I actually was able to attend four things, which was amazing. There were so many things going on last Saturday, and I took my sons to the early shift of things and then my daughter to the late shift. So it was really, it was a Monticello day. Early in the morning, I was happy to attend the track meet for a period of time. You'll see all the sporting events there. And I was actually also excited to think about the bleachers that are thought to be there and be able to grow some sense of, more of a sense of community and cohesiveness with all of us more together than slipping around on the hill or in our lawn chairs separated from each other. So anyway, it was nice to see all the hurdlers and the shop putters. And anyway, track meet was great. Prior to that, the PTO of RJK put together a fun run. And I did see some of it. I didn't attend all of it, but I did, so I saw the first part of it, which was, it was only a mile and a half race right out here. It was so cold and windy and rainy. And the volunteers of that group, of the PTO, are just troopers. They were there probably 8:00 AM putting up all the rainbow that you run through. And they're just really great people. They want to do well for the kids, so that was great. So my boys attended that with me. And then I went to the Sullivan County Art Show at Bethel Woods with my daughter. I saw Victoria's son's artwork there. And I didn't know it was going to be there, so it's funny. I went to go take a picture because I took a picture of two dozen things or so there that I liked, even if it's any school. And I went to go take it, and I was like, oh, that's, I know who that is. So anyway, that was great. And then I saw Once Upon a Mattress. And with our, Sophia's great, there are other student board members. Caitlin Weiss was the princess there, the princess with a P. And she did an excellent job, so did everybody that was in the play. It was, I always enjoy those things and seeing the people, the community, talking a lot, sorry. The last thing would be, I went to a DCEP meeting within this period of time, between the last meeting and this meeting, virtually with some of the administrators talking about plans for the school. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Riley. Ms. Holmes?
I attended the policy meeting right before this. I also did the Capital Project Committee meeting where we reviewed RFPs this week. I don't know. I'm still reviewing, but I'll let you guys know. That's it.
Ms. Jersey?
I attended the musical last Friday night, the Capital Project meeting yesterday, the softball games, some baseball games, and Sullivan County Boys' Dinner.
Thank you very much. I'm going to kind of echo what everyone else has been doing. The musical and the track meet, I kind of hung out at the capital improvement table, which will probably be at a lot of events coming up. We have poster boards with projected ideas for the track and fieldhouse. Hopefully, we'll get some blowouts of the elementary schools and what classrooms are getting worked on and things of that, as long as the voters approve the project on May 21st. But really excited to push that forward and move forward. I believe at the track meet, there was a couple of people that took the proverbial slide down that hill, considering how wet and rainy it was. Having bleachers there and a fieldhouse would be, I think, incredibly beneficial to the district, not only for viewing pleasure, graduations, games, and things of that nature, but even just in the context of safety, not only for our students, staff, visitors, and everyone else who utilizes that spectator area over there. Also, the Capital Project Committee reviewing the RFPs for construction manager jobs. The construction manager job for hopefully the upcoming bond proposal. So thank you, everyone, for keeping busy coming up into the end of the year. So thank you so much for that. Yes, Ashley?
I know I spoke a lot, but I just, I meant to say something about Rebecca Perez when I saw that she was resigning for, you know, reasons, personal reasons, whatever. But I just wanted to say that I personally had worked with her about 10 years ago when I was at the middle school, and I want to say that she, I don't necessarily know the others people on this list, but knowing her, I just, I believe I have to just say that she's one of a kind. I just, when I worked with her, always was light and could do her job very well. And I just, when I saw that, I was disheartened. I just wanted to say that I wish her well. Thank you.
Mrs. Riley? Moving on from board roundtable, we have director reports. Any questions, comments regarding the director reports? And at this time, moving, I'm sorry.
I would just like to say that I really like the pictures that the directors are putting in their reports, like Mr. Lewis, he added a couple of pictures. I really enjoy seeing that in their reports. Thank you.
Moving on from there, we have policy committee memo, Dr. Evans.
Thank you, President Crumley. And as was mentioned earlier, we had a policy committee meeting earlier this evening. What was determined there is that there will be two policies that will be brought forward to the board at the next meeting for a first reading. Those recommendations come to us from NISBA. And also, Ms. Phelan has drafted some updates to our pre-reduced lunch meals policy. The committee is also recommending that we convene a ad hoc committee to review the district's grading policy. We intend to start that later this spring or early summer, run it into next year. And the policy committee has asked for a list of recommendations to the grading policy by February 1st of next year with hopeful adoption of a new policy by the start of the following school year or September of '25. More to come on that. And also tonight, the Board of Education will be acting upon seven second reads of policies. Those two all come to us by way of the New York State School Boards Association. And we're asking you to do a second reading and adoption of those. And I almost forgot, the policy committee did start reviewing policies that have not been adopted in some time. So earlier tonight, I think we looked at six or seven? Five. Five policies that were adopted or last had board action on them in 2007. So right now, the committee is reviewing them. And at the next meeting, they will come back with if they have any ideas or thoughts about whether or not they should be changed in any way. And hopefully, as time permits, we'll be able to chew on more of these.
Any questions regarding policy? Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Correspondence outcomes are listed in the agenda under public content in regards to public comment from last meeting. Capital Project update.
So just a few other minor items relative to the Capital Project. You heard earlier, the Capital Project Committee met yesterday to begin reviewing response for proposals for construction management. We'll continue to work on that. We'll be hosting a public community forum on Thursday, May 2nd at 6:00 PM, not 5:00 PM, but at 6:00 PM, in the auxiliary gym of Monticello High School. It will be an informational session on the proposed capital improvement project. And weather permitting, we would then tour Ed Kennedy Field, review where some of the improvements would be made to the athletic facility, the Ed Kennedy Field and the fields in that area. And we've also posted an informational website and created a brochure. I have shared that with the board in your public contents. So the PDF is there. If you want hard copies of that, we do have it in the district office. I will bring some to the next board meeting. There's also, as Tim mentioned, a, we do have a little setup that we do at public events tomorrow evening from 5:00 to 7:00. The table will be at the Rutherford Steam and Literacy Night. I'll be there for a little bit of it, but if any of you want to stop by and, you know, answer any questions that parents or community members might have, please feel free to do so. I did talk to Ms. Serrano about putting it front and center. And I want to recognize Ms. Bonfante, our Director of Communications, for the work she's doing in providing information around this project. So thank you, Ms. Bonfante.
Are we also doing the drone and all the other?
So we have the drone here today.
Yeah. We recorded in our conference chair all morning.
Yeah. We'll be publishing, posting, producing an informational video hopefully before the end of the month.
Excellent question. Are these things going on the bulletin boards, like at ShopRite, all over the place? Sign this stuff, cover it up for people that are not active?
So I do intend on talking to ShopRite and probably the Trading Post in Rock Hill about setting up a table on a weekend for a few hours. But we can, we can put the brochures out in libraries for sure and anyplace else where there's a bulletin board.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding Capital Project?
I think this flyer is beautiful.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on from there, we have upcoming events, which are listed in the agenda. After that, community events. We have a couple articles in there from the Democrat that you guys can look over. Questions and comments from the public. I know we have questions and comments from the public. I just have to read our little disclaimer, and then we'll get started. "The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and matters of public interest. In order to prevent the fair and orderly expression of public comment, the following rules shall govern and will be administered by the presiding officer. Please note, the first public comment period of 45 minutes maximum duration will be at the beginning of the meeting and a period of 15 minutes maximum at the end of the meeting. Either period may be extended by a majority vote of the board. Neither public comment period is a time for public discussion. Necessary, the community member will be contacted for follow-up. If you wish to speak, place your name, email, and/or address and telephone number on the sign-in list indicating the topic of your comments. Prior to making your comments, state your name for the record. Identify any group or organization you represent. Comments are limited to three minutes or less per speaker. A speaker may not yield his/her time to another speaker in order to extend the time for comment. No speaker may comment on or identify any particular student or employee by name, position, or situation in his/her comments. All comments are to be directed to the board president or designate. Handouts and/or petitions are to be given only to the board president for distribution to the board. The board will receive and consider all written comments. A memo will be placed on the agenda on the next meeting under Information, Reports, and Discussions to keep the board informed of the outcomes. It will be titled Correspondence Outcomes and will be a public document." Janet?
There are 12 names. First name is Philip Alden.
Right here?
Yes, sir. My name is Philip Alden. I'm representing the St. John's Alternative High School staff and students. After I do my initial speech, any remaining time that I have, I will do to represent one of our students, Tasha Mann. Although I've only been working in the sphere of education for about three years, I've never quite had another work experience as phenomenal as being a part of the staff and team of the Alternative High School at St. John Street. I can't describe the passion behind the team as anything less than a force. The atmosphere I'm surrounded by is inspiring. I feel a motivational drive backed by a sense of hope and importance that is unmatched by any job I have ever held previously. For those of you who are not aware, as built into our schedule, we stay back an hour after the students leave. We use this time to discuss the successes that we had during the day as well as the complications faced going forward, and we create actionable plans to solve those complications. In these meetings, during the first two weeks of the school, that I witnessed, it was what I witnessed this program can be and what it is and the incredible team behind it. The reason why I share this with you today is because our separate space in the SJS Building provides the environment for this team to work at 100% of its potential. We're free from many probable distractions that exist at the high school main campus. The work has been done by the staff and students to build an uninterrupted environment. Our students have a negative view of the main campus. They do not feel safe in that building, whether it be from previous interactions with students or trauma from personal experiences that have been projected onto the idea of going to school. We seek to keep the Alternative High School at St. John Street for the same reason our program is limited to 25 students. It provides the physical and psychological space as needed for our students to feel safe and comfortable at the school. When students feel safe and comfortable, they feel a sense of belonging. These three things are the first three levels of Maslow's hierarchy of needs. It's something that almost every teacher is taught coming out of college. Many of our students have lost this sense of belonging at the main campus of the high school. Excuse me? This isn't to say that the Alternative High School program cannot be successful on the main campus, but that the program is already in its ideal location. The students and other community members of the SJS School that are here today recognize this fact, and they're willing to stand up for their own place in this district. Thank you. I'll now, excuse me. I will now move on to Tasha Mann's statement. Drama is a common experience for kids our age, and I'll Drama is a common experience for kids our age, and although it is a part of the average life of a high school student, it is not always pleasant. The teachers at SJS always work with us to solve our drama, whether it be with other students in our personal lives or with even other teachers. When you have an issue with another student at SJS, the issue is resolved in a quick and calm manner. The teachers will help you as soon as the problem presents itself, and we'll work with both students to solve the problem. In my experience, this isn't common in the other high school. This is because at the other high school, there are not enough teachers to handle the problems when they appear. At SJS, we're small enough so that when a student needs someone, a teacher can go there right away for us.
Mr. Alden? You've reached your three minutes, but if you would like to give us that paperwork, I could distribute that to the Board, and they can read through that document.
Yeah, so like email or paper copy?
If you give me the paper copy, I, and then I can arrange to get that back to you if you would like.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mariah Foreman.
Ms. Foreman.
Hi, Mariah Foreman. I'm from St. John Street, and I'm speaking on another, for another student at St. John Street. I want to tell you about the recent exams last January. I was in the SJS program for about two months, and was told that I had to take my recent exams at high school. I expressed to staff, both the teachers and the principal, that I did not feel safe going over there.
Excuse me, Ms. Foreman. We can't really talk about particular circumstances. Yeah. Even though it pertains to you in particular, it's just...
I can't talk about the particular situation.
The fact that you feel more comfortable at St. John Street rather than going back to the high school is perfectly fine, but individual specific situations is kind of... But that's what you were trying to relay, correct?
Yeah, redirect her on the speech. Yeah, redirect her on the statement.
You've got two minutes.
Long story short, my test was invalidated. I was scared, and the only people that cared about me were my teachers at SJS. This is what SJS is to me, my safe place and my home. I have used my time at SJS to not only grow as a student, who for the first time in my life is an honor roll, but as a person too. When I first got to SJS, I wasn't the best student. I acted out and didn't know how to express myself. Over the first few months, if I did act out, instead of just getting in trouble, the staff would work with me and find out why and try to change what is happening. Over the course of the last year and a half, sure, I still act out, but I know that I will be able to talk through my emotions. And someone will be there for me while that is happening. That is my favorite thing about SJS. They never give love on us. They don't judge us at our worst, and they know what is best for us. Without this program, I don't know where I would be. Without the love they show me, the faith they have in me, the way they believe in me, even if I don't believe in myself, means everything to me. I graduated in two months, so I am up here for me. I'm up here for the next students, just like me, that would need the same safety and same support. Money comes and goes, but a program like SJS doesn't come around often.
Thank you very much, Ms. Foreman.
Erica Omo.
Hi, my name is Erica Omo. I am a student at St. John Street, and I'm speaking on behalf of the St. John Street Alternative Program. For years, I've struggled with school mentally, emotionally, and physically. I was struggling with depression so bad, and I hated school so bad to the point where it would make me sick just thinking about it. My experience at the high school was beyond terrible. Between the teachers and students, I felt hopeless. I gave up. I was unmotivated, emotionally distressed, overwhelmed, and drained. I felt so unsafe and unwelcome. I didn't feel like I deserved anything. I felt like I wasn't going to get anywhere in life. My absence was so high to the point where my mom was getting called every day. I was failing every class and was getting no help. I wanted so badly to drop out until I heard about the St. John Street Alternative Program. I doubted myself and the program for the simple fact that the high school made me think and feel that the program was for bad children, but I was willing to take my chances. My first day at St. John's felt amazing. I was welcomed with open arms by all staff and students, and I immediately knew I found my spot. I felt safer than ever going into a school, and I knew I didn't have to be afraid walking into a school like I did at the high school. St. John's has taught me so much and made me realize that I can do anything I put my heart, mind, and dedication to. I found myself opening up and going way out of my comfort zone without being judged. St. John's has given me so many opportunities and support. Despite the perceptions people have on us, we know as a community and a family that we are so much greater than what people make us out to be. I feel that it is important for us to be in an environment that we feel comfortable and safe in. And not only do we feel safe as a program, but most importantly, we feel safe in our building. If it wasn't for St. John's, I don't know where I would be today. I've become a better version of myself and have had nothing but good grades and high honor rolls since being here. And it's all thanks to my teachers and friends at St. John's, and I wouldn't want to be anywhere else.
John Akbar.
Mr. Akbar?
Hi, my name is Brooke. I'm a graduate from the SJS program.
John Akbar.
My name is John Akbar. I'm a student at St. John Street. I'm here to discuss why we should keep this program at St. John's. When I first came into this program, I thought it wasn't going to work out. When I was at the high school, I never went to class. I always skipped or walked out. I didn't feel welcome. It was like all my teachers did. But then I had gone to summer school for algebra this past summer. The first day of math, the teacher introduced us. The teacher introduced us to, who was the current math teacher at that day. I felt very vulnerable, but I got to know him and hear him by trust. He would make jokes and talk about basketball. I felt like he understood me. So I liked his class and went every day, and I ended up passing algebra in summer school. Before I actually started, I got a call from the high school. It was my guidance counselor, and she had asked me if I wanted to go to the high school or St. John's. I decided to go to St. John's. I knew it was going to be a better place for me, and indeed it was. I thought it wasn't going to work out for me, but it worked. I started passing all my classes. I didn't want to be home. I actually wanted to come to school. I had felt safer than ever. I had felt safer, safer than I had in the other buildings. And if something had happened at home, I would want to come to school. It was a safe space. I never got judged by the way I had come into the school by the teachers, staff, and all the students. We all became more than a program. We became a family. Can't let this go. Even though I'm graduating in a few months, I'm going to be after my fears because I want, I want them to continue to have a better environment. It helped me. I thought I was never going to graduate, but I'm on the right track. I've gotten so many opportunities from coming to St. John's. The teachers have been nothing but supportive to me. I recently lost my dad, and I was so devastated, but they helped me out in any way possible. They even came to my dad's funeral and touched my heart because if I was in the high school, they wouldn't do that to me. Our teachers really care about us, unlike the high schools, who are just there for a paycheck and maybe... These teachers really want what's best for us. At the high school, they label us as the bad kids, but we're not. Recently, I had went to the high school to see someone, and half the teachers made promises towards me, not believing I was doing good in school. They talked down, down on me like I was nothing. At St. John's, we had so many opportunities, and we meet so many new people. And we go on field visits, but we have to earn that. There's a lot of things which set us apart from all the students in the high school. It's been a long road to get where we're at today. We understand that St. John's costs money, but we can get the funding from fundraising and selling stuff for our school. And we are willing to do anything possible for our program to stay open and specifically stay at our location. There wasn't an issue last year, and this program has been so successful, so why stop? Last year, several students graduated. We should continue our program because we're making a difference.
Michaela Rodriguez. Michaela? Susan Mendoza. Oh, Michaela, sorry. Hi.
My name is Michaela Rodriguez, and I'm speaking on behalf of the St. John Community School. Growing up, I had always struggled with school, and I felt like no matter how hard I tried, I was never good enough to track my mental health decline. I had over 30 absences. I was failing all my classes, and I had dropped out because of how much I hated to be in school. When I moved to Monticello, I told my dad I wanted to re-enroll back into school, but I did not feel, I did not want to go to the high school because I felt unsafe and uncomfortable in that building, to which he told me he completely agreed. When I found out I was accepted into the St. John program, I was nervous and anxious because I had thought it was going to be the same as my previous school. I quickly realized that was not the case because it was a completely different location and had completely different people than the regular high school. When I first got to the school, the staff greeted me with smiles and open arms, and I could not be more grateful for them. This program has helped me and many other students tremendously. I now enjoy going to school, and I've had honor rolls since I began the program. The staff has helped me through my challenging moments and have been nothing but supportive of me. Without this program, I would not be where I am today. They have helped me get a job. They have helped improve my mental health, and most importantly, they have helped me become a better person. I am proud to say I am a St. John's student. We are not just a program, but we are a family, and I could not ask for a better family to have by my side. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Dr. Evans, respected Board members and attendees.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Time out.
Sorry, excuse me. I'm about to introduce myself.
No, Janet, who's next on the list?
Susan Mendoza.
Is that you?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Thank you kindly. Again, good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to stand here, giving the school an opportunity to stand here. My name is Susan Mendoza, and I'm a business owner in the community for eight years. For over 30-plus years, I've been a mindfulness meditation teacher, yoga teacher, somatic movement teacher, and a health and wellness coach. So I'm standing here this evening to speak on behalf of Jennifer Kolatlov. Keeping SJS Open. SJS School is not only just a school, SJS is a helper, a comfort, an opportunity, and most of all, a family to all of us. This school gives us a head start for our career, helps us to find jobs and options to choose if we don't know what we want to do yet in the future. Every single student comes here and looks forward to see what we are going to learn and to be able to do. Activities that we all have a great time doing because we've earned it. Teachers, staff, principal, and assistant principal do a great job in making sure that not only are we being on task, but that we are okay emotionally, physically, and mentally. They never ignore us. They are always paying attention to us and what we have to say and make time for us. As somebody who hated to go to school and always had bad grades, now I can finally say that I'm proud of myself, my grades, and my goals. This school gave me enough motivation to get honor roll for the first time ever, and to me, that is a huge accomplishment. Everybody came here to get a better education and to change ourselves for the better, and I can say it's been absolutely working for us. The opportunities, the second chances, have all been a great help to all of us. And not many schools give opportunities we need to succeed and go further in life as well as our education. We as a whole are like a family, and we all know family are stronger together. This program has showed that working hard and focusing on our tasks can bring a lot of good things to us. SJS is truly a great program. And I just wanted to add personally that, you know, I really believe that education is not and it should not be a one-size-fits-all, that some students absolutely thrive in big bustling school environments, and some children, it's just too much. It's too overwhelming, and it's not fair to give them that, to give them that environment for success. The fact that these students have stood up here tonight, wrote their own speeches, and had the guts to stand up here with such confidence to read in front of you is a testament to the incredible teaching staff and to their hearts and souls. So, you know, I heard you mention, Dr. Evans, you know, about, you know, balancing a budget. What's really important here, I think, to consider or to reconsider is how to, you know, the balancing of a child, right? Mentally, emotionally, socially, all of these things. So I really, really think you should reconsider, because I really think you could be leaders in something that I think is a bit of a problem systemically. But now you have a chance to actually be change makers. Thank you.
Steven Rodriguez.
I came here today to support the staff and students of St. John Street. My daughter attends the program. Prior to enrolling in the program, she was a high school dropout. She did so because she suffered from anxiety and depression. She was overwhelmed in the previous school district that she attended. And after the pandemic, things got a lot worse. Learned about the St. John Street program, and we enrolled her in there, and she returns to school. She was apprehensive at first, but she promised to give it her all. Within the first few weeks, she began sharing her positive interaction with me. From my perspective, her transfer, her transformation was incredible. She was eager to go to school every day. Her episodes with anxiety were pure and far in between. She's been on the honor roll consistently. This is something she hasn't done since elementary school. And most importantly, she feels safe at the, at the school. The program helped her get a weekend job, which she loves, and she's excelling in. The staff at St. John Street have mastered the art of becoming, of building a team. And it's not only as a staff, but in building a team for the children and building a family environment. I understand that there are budgetary issues. I'm a single father of three children. I'm a small business owner, and I get that. But when something works, you try to find a way to keep it going. And I came here to implore you all to please try to keep the St. John Street program as is because it's working, and it's not only working for my daughter, but it's working for all these other kids who have had the guts to come up here and speak to you and try to support the program. So with that, I just ask you, please reconsider and try to keep the St. John Street program where it is. Thank you.
Lauren Babcock.
Hello, I'm Lauren Babcock. I'll be speaking on behalf of the St. John's School. I'd just like to share my thoughts on the St. John Street program closing and/or relocating. I transferred to St. John Street the second quarter of my senior year. St. John Street environment changed my whole learning experience. They had the proper tools and resources necessary to accommodate for each person individually. St. John Street makes you want to go to school and learn, to interact with classmates, and actually succeed in school. Before St. John Street, I didn't know if I was going to graduate or not, but every person there pushes you to be the best version of yourself, to strive to meet your goals, and to just get it done. I've never felt such a safe environment, learning and being able to ask questions and get one-on-one help like I did in the program. They encourage you to show up, do the work, and get it done. The teaching style is different, and it's geared toward... and get it done. The teaching style is different, and it's geared toward a different style of learning. We had more project-based work and different approaches to learning, which actually made it enjoyable. The teachers also understood the students very well, and they could tell if we were frustrated, overwhelmed. Sorry. They could tell if we were frustrated or overwhelmed, and they helped us overcome struggles beyond education. They gave us opportunities to explore various experiences beyond high school and paths to follow career-wise. We all grew strength in building our resume and exploring careers we didn't even know existed. Without St. John Street, I don't think I'd have my high school diploma, and I believe many others feel the exact same way. And the fact that the program takes you out of the high school might have made the biggest difference. After being with the same students, staff, and teachers for most of my education, being able to get out of that environment and change of pace created a whole different atmosphere of learning for me. With the St. John Street program in a different building, it gives you more opportunity to learn and grow. When I was a student there, we were doing art projects around the entire building, we had a gym set up on the second floor, and an entire closet room full of clothes and art supplies. St. John Street works, and I would hate to see it shut down or move. Thank you.
Babcock.
Brooke Babcock.
My name is Brooke. I'm a graduate from the SJS program, and I can honestly say I would not have graduated without it or the staff at the program. During my time in the high school, I would call my mother's phone daily, begging to be picked up with, from severe anxiety attacks and panic attacks caused by the staff, students, and environment in the high school. Some students, including myself, can get easily overwhelmed with the fast-paced environment in the high school, with the hundreds of kids running around trying to get to class in under three minutes. Also, I'm sorry, with everything going on inside and outside the high school, also all the issues that take place. At SJS, it's a slower-paced environment where you can have one-on-one time and be more comfortable answering questions and learn with more hands-on material. With the help from the SJS program and staff, I was able to explore and visit much more opportunities that I would have not known about without the program. The staff at SJS get to know each student on their own time without pushing, and they help with much more than just education. They listen to what you have to say and they make you feel good. Thank you.
Jennifer Babcock.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. I'm a parent of three children that attended Monticello Central School District. I myself attended Monticello School District. I have two children that graduated from St. John Street. You know, in your life, you have children, you either just send them off to childcare, keep them home, but around the age of four or five, you send them, you sign them up for, for school, and then that's it. For the next thirteen years, five days a week, seven hours a day, for approximately one hundred and eighty days a year, you leave your child with people that are there to mold and teach your little child into young adulthood. Those days and hours, they go so fast, and before you know it, the years are gone. And, you know, you have raised your child with your beliefs and what you want to instill in them, but these teachers in this environment have a lot of say in what your children see and feel and hear and learn. And the busy high school, I agree, is not always the best environment. St. John's is a more slower-paced, it's more simply, it's centered on each individual child. It gives them the opportunity to be in an environment where they feel comfortable, they feel safe to express themselves, their needs are met on every level possible. I honestly don't think either one of my daughters would have graduated if they stayed in the high school. And that being said, the experience and the knowledge they gained was unmeasurable. I'll forever be grateful for them, and I think that it would be a big shame if it got put back in an environment where it's not as conducive to all of the students to be able to learn and flourish in Rome. Thank you again for your time.
Kayla Foster.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kayla Foster. I too am speaking on behalf of the St. John Street Alternative Program staff and students alike. I want to take a moment to talk about what matters. Each of us, board members, administration, staff members, students and families are here because education, culture, and affecting change matters to us. Education matters. The St. John Street program works. It works because what we're made of, students and staff alike, but just as important, it works because of our environment. Yes, we as people are St. John Street, but our building and having a separate space is what makes it work. We've created culture, autonomy, and a smaller space students are comfortable in that's theirs. It's psychologically proven, it's easier to change a habit if you change the environment, it occurs it. This is what we're able to accomplish in our building and why it's successful. Culture matters. Physically, there may be space for us at the high school, but it's been made clear who we are as people, what we do, and our program doesn't have the same place in the building and culture. This has been relayed by many that there is simply no room for the program and what we represent. So, with environment, how can we tell our students that their success is important to us by surrounding them with the opposite message? Lastly, affecting change matters. You've heard from students and staff about their experiences and the need for our program and its location. I hope the turnout this evening can display just how important affecting change is to all of us. We have students and their families advocating for themselves, for future students, and for teachers as well. I ask you tonight to respond. Be the change, be the people who hear and respect the community and their needs. Be the people who affect change for the better. Let us stay at St. John Street and let us continue to succeed at what matters. Thank you.
Thomas Ventry.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Ventry. I'm the math teacher at St. John Street. I'm here to speak about the program. I'm frequently asked, how do we get so lucky with the staff at St. John Street, being able to do all the social, emotional, and relationship building with the students while keeping up with academics? My response is always the same. You let us be us. And our personality shines through in, in everything that we do at St. John Street, which is pretty apparent tonight. Sitting here tonight, I can't help but think about what my colleagues said at the last board meeting. Teaching is about finding your why. Well, this right here, these people right here, are my why. I mention that because I think it should be all of your whys as well. Maybe not this exact cause or these exact people, but each and every one of you sitting here are sitting here for the sole purpose of making our district a better place. And all of you sitting up here know that this isn't a one-person task. It takes buy-in, and buy-in is what we have here tonight. The students that so bravely spoke, fighting off anxiety, nerves, and tears, are the same students that were castoffs, forgotten, or given up at the high school. But tonight, they're here fighting because not only do they care about their academics, but they also care about their peers. They not only care about their own safety, but those around them as well. Then there are the parents and community members that are here tonight as well, standing up for the students as the people that know them best, fighting for them to continue their success in school and in life. Finally, you have the staff, my incredible colleagues, my team, my friends, my people. Each one of us as dedicated as the next, always lifting each other up when one of us is down, but more importantly, acknowledging when we are successful as well. We have developed a team that is truly rare in education. We communicate on how to handle situations, help students by working together to find unique situations, and have open discussions even when we might not agree with each other's opinions. It isn't even the passion that ends at St. John Street for the staff. It goes in the district as well. When the district needed homebound tutors, tutors, all of us signed up. When the district needed student enrichment coordinators, all of us signed up. Last summer, when the district didn't have enough teachers for summer enrichment, all of us signed up. And we did this all while others in the district openly talked negative about our program, sometimes to our face, but even worse behind our backs. I stand up here tonight with great pride, probably the proudest I've ever been in my life. But with that, I'm also humbled. Humbled because despite the amazing things said about this program tonight, we are still here to ask all of you a something. So I stand here to ask you two things. Let us, all of us, continue to be us, and let the Alternative Program stay at St. John Street. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight and letting us know how you feel and your admiration for the St. John Street. Thank you very much for letting us, letting us know. If anybody would like to drop your comments with me, I can have them distributed to the board because we do have a couple of board members that are not present this evening due to family expenses. It's nine-thirty. Is everybody okay with having students who need stuff signed off coming up and getting it signed off? So real quick, if you need something signed off, whether it be civics or whatever reason you might be here to have it for, for a class, please come up real quick and get it. Anybody can sign it, any board member can sign.
Moving on, we have our update with superintendent information, update and information, Dr. Evans. Thank you, President Crumley. Good evening, board members. I too, just to follow up on some of the events that were mentioned earlier. Well done to the musical performers, producers, and directors. It was a wonderful show, and I'm proud of what they've done. Also, congratulations to, to us. The district was identified as a best community for education for the fifteenth year in a row, and congratulations to, I can put a mic on. Congratulations to our, our performing arts department, our music teachers, dance teachers, for being named a best community in education for the fifteenth year in a row by the National Association of Music Merchants. This is a recognition of their work and also the district's commitment to the arts. So congratulations to them. A couple other items that I do want to share with the board, first and foremost, you know, in recognizing some of the comments that were made earlier. While I certainly have been around long enough to recognize that there are no cookie-cutter environments for kids, and that every kid has a unique space and a unique mindset and attributes and how they approach things, I do want to recognize, and I also recognize that people are entitled to their opinions, good, bad, or indifferent about different programs that we run. However, I also know that currently at the high school and in all our schools, there are a vast majority of adults who care deeply about our kids every day, day in, day out, and are willing to go the extra mile for our kids. So I wouldn't in any way want some of the comments that were made to cast dispersions on our staff members because the vast majority of them do excellent work every day for our kids. So I want to be clear in that. Also, as a follow-up to some of the comments that were made, when we began exploring this process, we knew that it would be a delicate one, we knew that it would be an emotional one, we knew that if kids and the staff members of St. John Street were to be integrated into the high school, that it would take a special leader to facilitate that process. So tonight, later on in the action items, the Board of Education will be acting on an MOA that will formally recognize Jennifer Gore as the next principal of Monticello High School, and I want to thank Ms. Gore for her willingness to step up and transfer into this position. Congratulations. Couple of the brief items, and some of the things that Ms. Gore will be taking on in her new role. The New York State Education Department recently published high school graduation rates in New York State. Unfortunately, we experienced a slight decline in our high school. The four-year cohort, or 2019 cohort graduation rate for June and August of 2023 is seventy-five percent. This was a slight decline from the 2018 cohort, which was seventy-nine percent, and lower than the New York State average of eighty-six percent. I have asked Ms. Carlin to work with Dr. Furman and other administrators to develop a presentation on the graduation rates that will be given at the first board meeting in June. We will also be convening an ad hoc high school graduation task force that will consist of various stakeholders and charged with making recommendations to the district administration and Board of Education by December first. So that will be organized over the next several weeks. They'll begin meeting before the end of the school year, throughout the summer and end of the fall, and the idea would be that they come back with recommended strategies and approaches that will specifically address improving graduation outcomes for our students. Another ad hoc committee that we will be establishing is a committee to review effective strategies on limiting, if not outright banning, student cellphone usage while in school. There are numerous studies that have shown significant negative relationships between students' mental and physical health and cellphone use. Many public schools are exploring strategies and practices to limit or ban student cellphone use. I think each of you get the Onboard magazine, there's a front page story on that in this most recent edition. There are schools in our area that have implemented such a ban. This committee, again, will be convened shortly and will provide recommendations on potential improvements in our cellphone policies and practices by October first, 2023. I should also note that the district's Code of Conduct Committee is currently meeting and will also be discussing this, but any changes here will be, you know, kind of more incremental in advisement to staff or students on how to limit or curtail cellphone usage. The committee I'm talking about is one that would actually explore the question as to whether or not cellphones should be banned from being out whatsoever while students are in school. So more to come on that. And lastly, we will be having a formal ribbon cutting for our new tennis courts tomorrow at three forty-five PM. So that's open to the public. The board is encouraged to attend, and then we have a boys, the first boys tennis team home match at four PM. That, I believe, is all that I have for this week. Any questions? Helen?
Are you looking for any parents or board members on those two ad hoc committees?
Yes, but we don't have the registration signup lists out yet, but we will be looking for board members and parents and caregivers as well.
Okay, thank you.
But I will share that with the entire board, so everybody, and I will text you when those signup sheets go out. Or I'll have Teresa do it. Ashley?
I just want to share my support for the cellphone ban. I know it's very controversial because I've tried to speak with moms who may have one child in the school, or maybe, and they really love that connection that they can talk with their kid whenever they want, it's very important to them, and it's hard to explain that it's not only affecting, you might have a positive thing going, but the fact that all the other students in the room may not use it in that same sense. going, but the fact that all the other students in the room may not use it in that same sense. What it does is it just drains the amount of time you have in a room to teach what you need to teach because you're teaching to a group of kids that have many, I would say, a good 20%, probably have some kind of cellphone addiction. That would be conservative figure there. And so it makes it so they can't remember as much. It means the teacher has to reteach things. So I'm very glad to have this considered, and I, and I do know that Middletown did it. And I don't know how well that worked out, but I am curious, I was always curious to know when I saw that in the paper a couple of years back, and I always wanted to know, you know, what happened with that. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And also, I loved in the readings on that board, they, how they have been very creative in walking the classroom, pocket things on the board, here, your phone's there, but it's not with you here. God forbid it's an emergency. It's there, but it's not here. So they've come out with great ways to, even though the kids will have phones for emergency purposes, but yet they've found ways to check them so they can teach and learn at the same time. It's been amazing.
So I know Middletown was mentioned in that article, interviewed the superintendent and other people in that article in Onboard. I also know they implemented the yonder pouches. And I also know at St. John's Street School, they piloted the yonder pouches with success. So that's a strategy. It comes with a price tag. But again, we're looking to, you know, kind of have a discussion that will carry into next year, you know, possibly changes as early as maybe a year from now, or perhaps at the latest, September of '25. Any other questions? Any other questions? Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Moving on to Assistant Superintendent for Business, Lisa.
Thank you, Mr. Crumley. This evening, I have the internal audit report, corrective action plan for the period through December, I believe, '23, was presented to the audit committee a couple of meetings ago. I have bored to approve the bid for the fuel for our next school year. We participate in the GCM FOC's cooperative, and to my surprise, fuel prices are lower than they are this current school year, so I locked into fixed prices wherever I could. And then I have the regular budget status, revenue status, claims auditors, we lunch proper, and ask for the benefit rate.
Any questions for Mrs. Bailey? Thank you very much, Lisa. Moving on to Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction. Teresa.
Thank you, President Crumley. Good evening. I have two contracts for you to approve tonight. They are both private school contracts for consultant teachers. Also, I wanted to just mention to you a program and a grant that we were invited to participate in. I know that uploaded, you have one of the documents. There's another document that I asked Janet to upload tomorrow. I would mention that you take a look at it. It's a PowerPoint from the beginning, the beginnings information of this that we've been getting, and it really does explain the program very well. But we, it's called the Resource Allocation Review Pilot. We were one of 18 districts chosen in New York State, and as you read through the requirements, you'll see what they are. We are eligible for up to $420,000 in grant funding to support the implementation of an equity plan. There are 10 things that we will take a look at over the next 18 months called the dimensions of equity, and they include things such as school funding, teacher quality and diversity, school leadership, empowering rigorous content, instructional time, positive and inviting school culture, student supports and intervention, high-quality early learning, learning-ready facilities, and diverse classrooms in schools. So we were lucky to be chosen for this. There are seven staff members that are on this committee. We begin, I begin training as facilitator this coming Monday, and then the seven of us will be in Albany on April 30th to kind of take a look at what this pilot is all about. And I'm of the belief so far that this will be something that will help our district look at a lot of the things that we're looking into improving on.
Mrs. Carlin?
Questions?
How would you suggest that, as a board member and as a parent, how would you suggest that I find out how this, how this affects my specific child? So I am on board with some equity things, but not all equity, equity things. So how would you suggest I go about getting the information on what programs would affect my child?
So at, at this point, this really doesn't look at specifically at programs. It's really giving us the opportunity to kind of dig apart our district and see where, just from, again, from funding all the way down to programming and, you know, to teacher effectiveness, where we excel and where we need to do some work. So as we dive into that, I will share that information with the board and give you updates. And, you know, you will obviously be, you know, informed of the things that we're looking at doing as a board.
So could some of the things be like hiring extra teachers or things like that? Would that come out of it? Or what kind of things would you think are going to come out of this? Do you have any?
If I may. I think equity here in this usage is more about, so we have six different schools. How do we provide for those schools in terms of resources? What's the student-to-teacher ratio? How much do we spend on intervention specialists in each school? Is there a school that has perceived higher-quality teachers than the other or higher-quality administrators? I think that's the equity lens they're using here. And we've already started to take a look in this budget process at our interventionists and identifying which schools have the highest, not the highest percentage of at-risk students. And then how many intervention specialists do we have in those schools compared to other schools of similar grade levels? So we think, we don't, we haven't been there yet, but we think that's kind of the approach that they take. Another equity piece, I would imagine, we're looking at disparities in terms of student outcomes, which is not new to this. You know, we've talked about that here at length in terms of, you know, different graduation rates, different proficiency rates of, based on, you know, you see these differences across different ethnic and demographic groups. We don't think it gets deeper into, yet, we don't know, into the kind of the curricular pieces. I think that might be a concern, as I've heard from board members in the past, but rather, how actually are we spreading the money around to the different schools? And how does that money translate to actual student programming, too?
And I would take the time, if you, if you have, to take a look at what the PowerPoint is. It really does explain it very nicely. And then the document that is already loaded has some really great points, too. And as I mentioned, as I move through this process, I will keep you updated.
Thanks for taking the question. I'm wondering, just listening to this, how much time does this take from, say, our existing staff? So right now, you're going to do the Resource Allocation Review Pilot program. Does that mean that you've got yourself and then two other curriculum people and then maybe a grant writer and possibly the director of SEL working on this? Is this just a lot of, maybe five administrators or so, working through this Resource Allocation Review Pilot program? Is that, how much time does that take out of your other duties that you're doing?
Well, as far as the professional development piece goes and the training, I'm thinking a couple of days, probably, over an 18-month period of time. I think the bigger piece is if we can take a look at this and do a really good job at, you know, digging in, I think it's actually going to create more efficiencies and allow us to, you know, really be able to, to support and promote our programs based on what we find.
So it's not just training, though. It's also you have to do data mining and then compiling. And so we're all doing that in-house. We're not, this pilot program isn't somebody like our grant program director that's going to come and this is going to be his, his baby and take it all on. This is five people or more that all hands are in the pot, and they're all figuring out all this data mining and then compiling and then observing what we get out of this. And I'm just wondering time. You said just training, but all of this other stuff takes time. So what would that be out of your typical day? 10% of your day, 5% of your day for all people? I'm just getting, I just don't know how big of a program this is. It, it doesn't seem like the typical, hey, this is something that we put 10,000 towards and we're going to have a half a day on it with the staff conference. This looks like it could be much more than that. So I just don't, I'm, I suppose I just don't really understand the whole scope of it and how much time it takes from the duties that are already given to all of the curriculum staff.
So I think, I know probably maybe a little bit more than you just by reading through this, but I don't know much more than that. And that's why I'm very interested to find out as I go through the training to answer some of those questions. I do think a lot of what we're looking at here are things that we should be looking at anyway, and it's a part of all of our jobs as directors and assistant superintendents and principals, to be looking at that data to make sure that we are providing equitable services across the board. Lisa's actually on the committee as the, as the purse string holder of the district. She has a lot of great information and can, and can offer that to our committee to kind of take a look at where we're spending our money to make sure that it's equitable as well.
So looking through this, you were saying we're one out of how many that got chosen?
15.
15.
Well, weren't we, weren't we, I can't think of what we were called.
18, 18 districts.
The target district.
The target district. So that could be why, maybe there's 10 building blocks here that you build on, and then I think that might be.
Yeah, there are specific requirements that identified us, and all of the districts that have been identified are in this first document that Janet's already loaded for you. So you can kind of see, most of them are actually city school districts. I think we're either the only one or one of the only couple that are not city school districts.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Another one of my concerns is it's, would my children be probed at this? You know, I just don't know the whole scheme. You said that you'll find out more about it, but just on the surface, my concerns are always, like I started off saying, I can, I can get on board with some of the equity, not, not all of it. So I don't, that's not my mic. So I don't know, like you said, you'll come back. So how, is that going to be part of, say, a presentation that you give when you learn more about what's going on? Is that a presentation that the curriculum department will put on to explain all the nuts and bolts and not just have it be, because for me, like you said, for you, this is like an enigma until you go to the training. I have zero clue what you're, what this is.
Right. I mean, my guess is I will give you regular updates, and then if the board, if the entire board would like a presentation, then we can go that direction. At that point, let's kind of go to the training and get some more information, and I can bring that forward, and we can go from there.
And when's the training?
The facilitator training is this Monday, and I'm the facilitator. And then the entire committee training is April 30th.
And then the trainings, the five administrators or so, or are there more people?
It's seven of us on the committee, including Lisa and I.
So it's five plus Lisa. Thank you.
You're welcome.
One quick question. Is this with 23K as well because it's early learn?
Yes.
This is for pretty.
I mean, I've been Googling it just for everyone, and there's, there's really, it's kind of really new, though. There's not much on it. So we're really going to learn as we go, so, you know.
See what it is, and if you can take something beneficial, take the stuff that you don't think is beneficial and push it off to the side.
$425,000 is $425,000.
All right. Are we good on curriculum update?
One quick question. So you'll find out what strings are attached to that $425,000? Absolutely.
All right, moving on to action items. Mrs. Greco.
I motion that we take action items T1 through T23 and T25 through T31 as a group.
Do I have a second?
I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Okay.
T1, T23.
And then T25 to T31 as a slate.
Do I have a second on that?
Okay.
Made by Ms. Holmes. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered.
I motion that we approve action items T1 through T23 and T25 through T21.
T31?
I'm seeing 31. T25 to T31, excuse me.
Do I have a second on that? By Ms. Jersey. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered.
Next, I motion that we approve action item T24.
Do I have a second on that? By Ms. Holmes. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Ms. Jersey abstains. So ordered. Mrs. Greco.
I motion that we approve action item T32 by roll call vote.
Do I have a second on that? Made by Ms. Jersey. Janet?
Timothy Crumley?
No.
Wendy Galligan Wiener? No. Adriana Mason Greco?
No.
Jennifer Holmes?
No.
Ellen Jersey?
No.
Victoria LaRusso?
No.
Ashley Riley?
No.
I'd like to motion that we approve action item T34 by roll call vote.
Do I have a second on that? Made by Ms. Jersey. Any discussion? Oh, it's a roll call, sorry. Janet?
Timothy Crumley?
Yes, aye.
Wendy Galligan Wiener?
Aye.
Adriana Mason Greco?
Aye.
Jennifer Holmes?
Aye.
Helen Jersey?
Aye.
Victoria LaRusso?
Aye.
Ashley Riley?
Yes. Okay.
Is that, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay.
Wow.
No, well, T33 is the board member, so if you want to make a motion for, can we turn off the mics, please? Who's her on? I don't even touch mine.
You can just turn them off, then.
We turned off the mothership.
Like yours.
Thank you, Dr. Evans.
I'd like to offer a motion to support the slate of Karen Billy, Billig, Ly, Linda Berkowitz, and Linda Fisk for FOC's board members.
Do I have a second on that? Made by Ms. Jersey. And are, we vote now? Was our? Yes, you vote now. Okay. So that's a roll call vote. Janet?
Yep. So that was Karen Billig, Linda Berkowitz, and Linda Fisk.
Yes. Yes.
Wendy Galligan Wiener?
Yes.
Adriana Mason Greco?
Yes.
Jennifer Holmes?
Yes.
Helen Jersey?
Yes.
Victoria LaRusso?
No.
And Ashley Riley?
No.
With five votes, the measure passes. So at that point, we don't have to make the other nomination. That concludes our action items. Closing of meeting, correspondence. None at this time. Any questions or comments from the public?
Not at this time.
Hey, Reggie. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn made by Mrs. LaRusso, seconded by Ms. Galligan. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Thank you very much, everybody. Janet, I have some contracts to sign.
Yes, sir. Wendy?
Yes.
I only need a tassel.
What do you need?
A tassel. Yeah, I told him that Tim wanted tassels. They, they never, no, I blathe you.